It is four thirty and we'd like to begin. It is four thirty and we'd like to begin. Welcome to all of you that are here. As well as those who are or will be listening in by way of Zoom. Uh, we are having some microphone issues yet, or have those been resolved? As far as the Zoom and listening in and people that are listening in by Zoom.
I can hear you fine, Mayor.
Okay. I'm, I'm right up.
I can hear you fine, Mayor.
Okay. I'm, I'm right up by the microphone, so if, if you're going to speak and address the council or as councilman as well.
As close as you can, I think, just so that.
Put that microphone as close as you can, I think, just so that everyone can hear properly. So I'd like to begin by, uh, standing for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance as, as our practice.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please. All right, if we get a roll call, please.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Ken Snyder.
Here.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Ken Snyder.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Brad Hent.
Here.
All right, moving forward to item two, the.
All right, moving forward to item two, the approval of our agenda. You have that in front of you. I accept a motion to prove it.
Some move.
Some move. Some move.
I'll take that as support from Tom, thank you. Any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Here, our eye.
Brad Hent.
Here, our eye.
Pete Hamel, no, uh, Ken Snyder. Pete Hamel, no, uh, Ken Snyder.
Tom Eggers.
Aye.
Aye.
Tom Eggers.
Wayne Barahona.
Aye.
Aye.
Wayne Barahona.
Aye.
All right, moving on then to the public forum.
All right, moving on then to the public forum.
Is there anyone here looking to speak to the council at this time? Is there anyone listening in by way of Zoom that would like to address the council?
That would like to address the council at this time?
Looking to address the council, you do need to unmute yourself prior to speaking.
If you are looking to address the council, you do need to unmute yourself prior to speaking.
Five more seconds.
Five more seconds.
No activity there, so.
See no activity there, so we will move on then to our consent agenda.
A motion to approve.
A motion to approve.
Some move.
Some move.
Any discussion?
Support. Any discussion?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Eggers.
Barahona?
Aye.
Barahona?
Snyder.
Aye.
Aye.
Snyder.
Hent.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Okay, that carries, and then we will move on then into the new business portion. First item up is the Crossroads North Phase Two.
Open the public hearing on that, are there any comments?
To open the public hearing on that, are there any comments from either those present or those listening in that would wish to address? The, uh, awarding of the contract for Crossroads North Phase Two.
Anyone listening in by Zoom?
Anyone listening in by Zoom?
Again, seeing no activity.
Again, seeing no activity.
Close the public hearing.
I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move.
Support.
Uh, one question before we go further.
Uh, one question before we go further, were there any?
Written comments.
Written comments regarding this that you're aware of? Okay. Uh, roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Eggers.
Barahona?
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay.
Then the, uh, second portion of that, we move into the.
Second portion of that, we move into the one million dollar general obligation capital loan notes. Uh, setting hearing for July. The hearing has been set.
Oh, okay.
You gotta award the bid.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Don't we need the public hearing first?
Just did that.
No, I just jumped over my skip.
No, I just jumped over my skip down too far here. All right, very good, sorry.
All right.
All right, that's. Slid too far with this screen.
The award of the contract, let's move forward with that.
The award of the contract, let's move forward with that.
Do you like a quick update?
Yes, please.
Do you like a quick update?
Yes, please.
We also have Pat, look at what's with us by Zoom, he can answer questions if he'd be. We received five bids. Uh, on the project, the low bidder is Clervica Excavating out of Baltimore, at the count seven hundred fifty-nine thousand five sixty. Call when Pat, uh, was here prior. The testament included contingencies yet because we were concerned about the bid environment. The testament was ninety without. Oh. Oh. Very happy with the bids. My. Contract. Contract.
Like they're all fairly close.
Yeah, no, good bid environment, I mean. Yeah, no, good bid environment, I mean, to have three of them under eight hundred thousand, we were pleased with that. Uh, just to have five bids.
Um, Clervica.
Um, Clervica. You don't have a ton of history with Clervica of the. He has subcontracted on several of our jobs to do some underground work. Subgrade prep and that kind of sort of thing. Expanded into more. Just contracting.
Confident.
Confident.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, awarding to Clervica contracting.
And in so doing, approving the resolution.
And in so doing, approving the resolution?
Yep.
Can we take care of that one step?
Yep. I'll approve the resolution.
Okay.
Mark it.
Did we?
What was that, Tom?
Go ahead.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, very good. Any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
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 Barahona?
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
All right, then on to six B, approving a three-year quote.
All right, then on to six B, approving a three-year quote from TownCloud for TownCloud Development Suite, which will allow us better use of our permitting and code, time to, uh, enforce code.
Sam, do you want to comment?
I do. Thank you, Mayor, so my explanation speaks for itself, but today I also invited Chris Haywood from TownCloud to be dialed in via Zoom. Chris, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me? Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you.
Chris, if you want to turn on your video.
Thank you.
Chris, if you want to turn on your video.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you want to turn on your video, so we can.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you want to turn on your video, so we can see you, possible?
I don't have that option.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I don't have that option.
Oh, okay.
They have to promote me to a panelist.
Very good, we'll take your oral report.
Very good, we'll take your oral report.
Recording in progress. Recording in progress.
Uh, can you see me now? Uh, can you see me now?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay. Well, good afternoon, I, uh, thank you for allowing me to address you and, uh, appreciate your time this afternoon. Um, I'll be brief, I just, uh, wanted to, you know, be available, make myself available to answer any questions that you have about our proposal. Uh, maybe just by way of a quick introduction, uh, for TownCloud and myself. Been working with the city, uh, as I'm sure you know now for a while, and Sam, um, you know, we started this company, uh, about six years ago, really with a desire to provide modern software, uh, based on modern development techniques and not having all of the limitations of any of the legacy platforms that are out there. Um, we've been working with local governments for really the majority of our careers. Uh, in fact, uh, you know, one of our founders is a former city council member, uh, and, uh, also founded, uh, uh, you know, HDE, uh, which was, uh, you know, utilized in over a thousand municipalities across the country. Um, you know, we, uh, are, you know, we really, um, try to focus here at TownCloud on, you know, providing value right away, without the typical complexity that you would have, uh, with, uh, a traditional software program. So we built, uh, all of the apps that we are, we brought to market and the ones that you're, are running on now for this meeting. Uh, it's all based on a new platform, uh, it's hosted in the cloud, which, uh, I know that term gets thrown around a lot, but, uh, really just a simplified way of managing servers. Um, you know, we, uh, handle all of the hosting, so you don't have to worry about, um, backups and faster management. Um, you know, all of that sort of thing, you know, we handle for you. Um, we try to be, really our goal is to have the simplest, um, arrangement possible to do business with us. Uh, so, you know, that's why we offer things on a subscription basis, we don't have, you know, large complex agreements to deal with. Um, and, you know, all of the apps that we are building are part of a common platform. Um, and so they all work together, um, they talk to each other and, um, you know, one of the things that, you know, has, you know, that we, you know, have actually seen is a tremendous amount of, uh, growth and, and demand in the market. Um, so we're working with folks, uh, in forty-two states across the country. Uh, you know, including, uh, you know, including, uh, many folks in Iowa. For a city, uh, Cola, Minnesota, uh, we have folks, just about every state, and, uh, it's our goal to be in every state. Uh, so, you know, with this, uh, particular project that we're asking for your approval on, um, you know, this came out of some conversations that we had, uh, and Sam shared with me some of the challenges that he has managing the process today. Um, we are building out, uh, this application and partnering with the city specifically to make sure that we address your requirements. Um, you know, we've asked the city to invest fifty thousand, um, that will be in the form of a three-year prepaid subscription. Uh, and we will be investing, you know, substantially more than that, you know, I mean, uh, really whatever it takes to make you guys happy, uh, at the end of the day, make sure that works, I mean, we're committed to your success because that's how these partnerships work. Um, but, you know, it would be pretty easy to say that we'll be, you know, spending at least, you know, three times that amount on our end. Uh, so, um, you know, really, uh, you know, everything that we're doing is designed really with a couple of principles in mind. Um, one is simplicity, you know, you can think of that practically in terms of user friendliness. Um, but then, you know, it's also something that is designed to scale. So, you know, we have made it our mission to help smaller agencies, as small as five hundred population and, um, you know, well over thirty thousand. And, um, you know, so we want to make sure that, you know, out of the box, uh, that the application just works, you don't have to, um, go out and get, you know, separate report writers and other things, um, to easily get information out of it, um, you know, it's kind of a turnkey and go. So, um, anyway, that's just a, a quick little introduction about TownCloud and, uh, you know, this particular, uh, program that we're working on with you. Uh, so if you have any questions, you know, feel free to let me know.
Uh, Mayor Gills, I don't, can you see us here too, or are you?
Uh, Mayor Gills, I don't, can you see us here too, or are you, we just able to see you, Chris?
I can see you.
Okay.
Uh, I, I can see you.
Okay. Mayor Gills, um, I, the question, is this still in development, or when you talk about the development, is that being developed for us as a community or a municipality specifically?
Well, the way I would describe it is, um, you know, you're, you're getting in on the ground floor. So this, for the use, the terminology that you might see on our website, this is part of our development suite. Um, so that's gonna include things like permitting and compliance and licenses. Um, but we're, because we're early on, we, you know, some of these things are available now, um, and you can utilize it now for the benefit of you, like licensing and even the cashiering part of it. Um, but the specific functionality that we're building for you is gonna be focused on the items, um, you know, related to the, uh, planning and zoning permits and the code enforcement.
I guess what I'm really, are there other municipalities currently using what you're, what we would be getting here as well?
Or is it still?
Or is it still?
For the planning and zoning and code enforcement part, no, not yet, that's what we're building.
Okay, yeah.
Um, for the other parts of the suite, yes.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Sam, question for you, based on your conversations.
Sam, question for you, based on your conversations with TownCloud, I know that, um, in the past, you talked about the somewhat archaic billing system that we have and, uh, how it's been difficult to manage, have there been talks about, um, migrating some of those resources away from the current software that we're using and then, uh, into this TownCloud suite, or are they still two separate, uh, of entities to have that overlap to try and relieve some of the burden from a, uh, the system that maybe could use some work?
I mean, in terms of permitting and code enforcement now?
Well, you know, it, it, Chris brought up the fact that it's, uh, you know, a developing suite and the different aspects of this particular, uh, software. Is that something that we're, are we going to be looking beyond permitting and zoning? As far as, uh, this particular relationship is concerned, or is this just really, uh, taking care of this one piece of the puzzle and then, um, moving forward?
It's a good point. It's a good point, and another smaller piece of the puzzle is licensing, which is mainly the peddlers permits. But we only do a handful of those a year, and I didn't want that to be the trigger for the three years to start, right? So, um, but as Chris alluded to, there's some, there's some things that I could migrate now. But that wouldn't start our three years.
Sure.
In answer to the question of the system that I have now, right now, it's a series of, of yellow folders in Windows, Windows Explorer on my computer, and it's, uh, there's a lot of files. And this, this would allow, well, let me give you an example. Is, Todd looks up the one call, um, calls that come in, that comes into a separate email address. He prints off for me, and then I check to see if there is a, a permit already, if someone's built, started building a fence, for example, without having a permit. And then I reach out to them and say, hey, just a reminder, you need a permit. So if we're able to automate that process more, where he can then, um, we, we can just tie it, tie it all together. And we're just, we're shuffling less, less paper. If you look at, if you look at my report at the end of the agenda, I have the, the zoning permit output there. And that, that is an output that if, if all goes well, once this is completed, the public and council and media will be able to go to a web link and see the final permit after they have been issued. The other nice thing about this is we already have the planning and zoning and board of adjustment is already in TownCloud. And we've got a board of adjustment meeting, for example, next week. And so, the way you get to the board of adjustment is you have a permit that can't be approved because it doesn't meet the zoning code. Then you send it off to the board of adjustment. Or if you have this, and that's a natural segue from this suite into agenda, which we already have.
Gotcha. So in terms of a timeline, we have a invoice.
So in terms of a timeline, we have a invoice, it was a down payment or whatever you want to call it. At what point can we expect that we would, because it says something in there about, uh, first.
Payment, three-year subscription.
Payment for the three-year, three-year subscription.
Begins production, when the customer begins.
When the customer begins production use of the first app implemented. So how, what kind of timeframe does that mean, are we talking weeks or months, or? That would be a question for you, Chris.
Sure, um, sure, I can answer that, for sure. Sure, um, no, I can answer that, sure. So the, as far as the, the timeline goes, you know, there's maybe a couple of different aspects of that. Um, the initial payment, um, is really just, you know, committing to the project. So that kind of, you know, starts the project from our standpoint. Um, I will work with Sam, you know, we have, you know, a high-level description of the functional needs that the city has. And we will build those out into the more detailed requirements, and then, you know, we'll work on mutually agreeable rollout schedule for that. Um, one of the things that's important to understand is that the three-year timeframe for the subscription does not start until you actually go live with the first module.
And that would be.
And that would be, I mean, do you have an, I mean, what is a typical, maybe there's not a typical since it's brand new.
At what point would that be put into service?
At what point would that first module be put into service?
Um, there's, there's two ways it can. Um, well, there's, there's two ways it can answer that. At, at a high level, you know, I would expect that we'd be looking at later this year. Um, the detailed answer is going to depend on what specifically goes into the functional requirement. Um, and, you know, there's different ways that you can approach the, the functionality that we've looked at. And so, um, as we work through those requirements in detail, then we'll have a better sense of the scope of what we need to build.
Okay.
So we can work on a more aggressive timeline, or we can also, um, you know, try to make sure that we get, you know, all of the features and functions that the city's looking for. So, I mean, that's something, you know, we've already, you know, I mean, for instance, you know, Sam has provided us feedback on the agenda product, and, you know, we've been able to incorporate that into our product roadmap. Uh, so, it's really something that, you know, we see it as a partnership, um, you know, between us, uh, as we move forward with this project and, and we try to have some give and take in it.
Is there anything in the contract that would?
Is there anything in the contract that would cover a worst-case scenario, or, uh, you know, uh, yeah, so TownCloud?
Six weeks from now decides.
Six weeks from now decides that goes belly up or whatever. Is there anything that would allow us then at that point, or is that twenty-five thousand dollars gone at that point?
You build into the contract?
Do we have any kind of a safety feature built into the contract for that? In the event that there isn't a delivery of the products that we're buying?
Well, I mean. Well, I mean, I, I don't know of many contracts that anticipate a, you know, belly-up scenario. Uh, but, you know, the, you know, as far as the funding, you know, with that commitment, you know, the first payment, you know, we're committing to, uh, that, to, to speed the project through. I mean, so, I mean, it's, uh, it's not a.
It's not an onerous contract, uh, you know, with the.
It's not an onerous contract, uh, you know, with the, a lot of, you know, terms and conditions spelled out. I mean, it's really, you know, we are, you know, trying to, you know, work on a good faith basis with the city. Uh, so, you know, I mean, as far as the, uh, you know, as far, as far as that goes. So, I, I'm not sure if there's something specifically or a specific scenario that you have in mind that you're concerned about, but, you know, I'd be happy to address that.
What's in the back of my mind is our.
What's in the back of my mind is our, our investment in, uh, water supply from many years ago, and it's still not here. And I just, I don't want it to be this kind of a scenario down the road where we end up with egg over our face then.
I don't see that happening, and I don't have.
I don't see that happening, and I don't have, you know, I'm not.
I, I haven't, I don't have the access to do my homework on TownCloud, or, you know, how viable a company it is, but it, these new. Commitments like that when we're just starting up, I, uh.
Commitments like that when we're just starting up, I, uh, there was a little bit of that red flag in my mind, are we gonna, you know, are we gonna get what we, what we're delivering, are we gonna get delivered what we're paying for?
You show me that we are?
If you show me that we are, okay.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Well, and, and I would also say that, you know, we have a track record of delivery, um, both with this company and with previous companies. Uh, you know, I mean, that, that, we, I mean, that's really, I would say, what differentiates us from most of the companies out there, most of the companies that are marketing and selling to local governments, have been in the space for twenty or thirty years or more. And, you know, we have the experience, our team has the experience, but this company is specifically built to bring a new generation of software to the market. So, this, you know, this type of arrangement is exactly, you know, how we're growing. Um, you know, we, you know, look for strategic partners, uh, across the country, uh, and, you know, we basically that, you know, as opposed to just kind of, you know, building platforms on, you know, in a vacuum, without feedback, you know, we like to validate our experience and our ideas about what we're bringing to market. So this is what we have done with everything that we've delivered so far, and this is also, you know, the way that we're building out this company, and, and this is what we've done, you know, with our previous companies as well. And, and it's always been, you know, very successful, um, and, and that's really because we are committed to your happiness.
Okay.
I have one question.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one question. What's the, uh, after the three years is up, what's the subscription fee yearly after that?
I apologize. I apologize, it was a little bit harder to hear the last question.
The, uh, after the three years subscription's up, then what is the annual fee going forward after that?
Um, retail rate for the subscription is seventeen thousand eight hundred eighty dollars.
Thank you. Kim, thank you.
Anybody else?
Anybody else?
This is basically just to facilitate, to move things along faster, to keep things in more order?
Two, two of what you just said. And then the third would be. And then the, the third would be.
I believe that at some point we're going.
I believe that at some point we're going to, I'm going to need someone to assist me.
Help with code enforcement.
To help with code enforcement and zoning permits. I'm not ready to ask for that now, because I, I don't, not really sure what I'm asking for, if I'm going to need a full-time person or a a part-time person, right now, if I hired that person today, they would be stepping into a situation that would be very difficult because everything is on yellow folders, and I know how to navigate it, Todd knows how to navigate it, I've showed him how a little bit. Um, but it's, uh. The other thing is having redundancy, or backup, I should say. Um, and, and a, a good place to store all of this, um, important data.
Okay.
Are we ready to move forward?
Are we ready to move forward?
Yeah, this is Tom.
Yeah, this is Tom.
No software.
Go ahead, Tom.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I'd just say that I think this is a first, good first step. For us to, uh, modernize our system as well. Uh, determine what our future, uh, employment needs are gonna be, our resources. And for the next three years, I think this will help. Sam and what he needs to do. Uh, Sam and what he needs to do, and, uh, with that, I, I go ahead and make the, uh, approve, or make the motion that we approve.
Approve the quote that they've offered.
Approve the quote that they've offered to us?
That's correct. That's correct, as presented.
Okay. Is there support for that?
Okay, we have a motion, we have, uh, in a second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have, uh, in a second. Any other discussion?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Barahona?
Aye.
Eggers?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Snyder?
Aye.
Hent?
Aye.
All right. All right, then, let's move forward.
All right, then, uh, let's move forward.
Yeah, thanks, Chris, for being with us.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Chris, for being with us today.
We appreciate it, and, uh, thank you for your time, and, uh, we look forward to working with you guys.
So we can move forward then on to item seven.
We can move forward then on to item seven, um, the bonding.
Uh, Sam, do you want to lead us into that?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Um, item seven A is the engagement agreement to defees or pay off early, the capital loan notes for the Crossroads Pavilion, which is a twenty-sixteen issue. Three point four million dollars originally issued, there's approximately two point four eight remaining. That amount would be paid, paid off early using what's called a defeasance. Transaction. Transaction, and that's where you pay off the debt into a separate account, it's then removed from our books completely. And then the pain, the pain agent makes the payments through the end of the, of the loan period, and then it frees up debt capacity for us to do other, other important endeavors, such as, um, streets and the fire truck. And this would be paid in, uh, early December when the next, um, round of property tax, um, comes in, and we'll have the, have enough funds. and that's how this defeasance would be covered.
Is, uh, Scott Stevenson on?
Is, uh, Scott Stevenson on?
Yes, he's on, I remember.
Aye.
Scott, can you hear us?
Scott, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me? Yes, I can, can you hear me?
So, the question that came up today, and I'm sorry I didn't have the chance to prep, prep you on this before the meeting, is, um, is what, what the interest rate is now on, on the, the money, or the, this debt, and what is the advantage to the city to pan it off now? To pan it off now?
The interest rate on the debt is, the interest rate on the debt is, uh, kind of three percent area. That's sort of a fixed cost, whether you escrow the fund now or not, you're obligated... Escrow the fund now or not, you're obligated, at which time, all day, at which time, or choose not, or you pay the bonds, or not, or refinance, or you got options, that juncture. The only reward advantage of doing the defeasance, setting up escrow account, and... Funds off of the city's assets, the escrow account, which will also, we're funding a bunch of liability bond, it is effectively the removal of the bond as a liability of balance sheet, as Sam noted, it frees up debt capacity, more or less just entirely eliminating debt, same as the calculation, balance sheet, those money, debt capacity calculations, um, on this financial thing, um, that, that, that does, that does, the objective is just utilizing a passion, the objective is just utilizing a passion you have on hand for the purposes of eliminating liability and that, the interest earnings by doing this, the interest earnings by doing this aren't going to be dramatic or significantly better in terms of, in terms of, in fact, there's not a lot of, there's not a lot of yield, certain terms of reinvestment or order, or, um, time council to characterize the debt as being the fees, removing the liability, the escrow account has to be vested directly in US treasury obligations, as, uh, probably you're well aware, that, um, it's not a lot of straight yield, um, interest rate yield, and you have treasury debt, so, there's not a lot of financial gain here, it's more of a, you know, utilizing cash that's on hand for midlife.
Okay, thank you. Did everyone get all of that?
Okay, thank you. Did everyone get all of that? I know there was a little bit of difficulty understanding.
Some of it didn't.
Someone that came through and some of it didn't.
I think Sam's summary in his explanation is probably as good as any, for why it makes sense to do this. Any questions or comments at this time?
Any questions or comments at this time?
Does this involve any kind of property tax increase?
Please, slip on the mic.
Any kind of property tax increase?
No.
No. You're using, your question is, does this involve a property tax increase? The answer is no. What you're doing, Ken, is you're using the revenues that you are getting from property taxes.
To pay it off.
To pay it off.
Of the money before we spend it on other priorities.
Spend it on the debt that we have. Spend it on the debt that we have. That's the philosophy behind this.
There's been several, read it that that, there would be an increase in order to do this. I didn't think so.
Absolutely not. There, there will, and if we, if we kept it as is, it would be twenty thirty-one, and then it would be paid off. So, what we're doing is we're paying a third-party agent, get it off our books, they're gonna make the payments, and then it's off our books, and then we can free up debt capacity to do other things.
Okay, that's fine. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Or comments?
Or comments?
Are we ready to move forward as far as first item on the engagement agreement?
The engagement agreement, approving that by resolution?
Remove that we approve the engagement agreement for defeasance of the Pavilion debt? Further discussion?
Support? Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Eggers.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
All right, now on to item seven B.
All right, now on to item seven B. Uh, I do have a written, a letter from Marvin Reeson, asking for consideration, I'd like to read that at this time before we move forward to it.
So, uh, yeah.
So, uh, yeah, let's open the public hearing, and I would like to do that. I'll start by reading the letter, then if there are other comments, they can be made after this.
Letter begins, in reference to bonding for the new fire truck.
I respectfully ask that you postpone the bonding for the new fire truck for a period of no more than thirty days, so the council can pursue other avenues for financing, such as selling a couple of city properties, interest money the city's receiving on accounts, insurance money from the fire truck that was totaled, existing revenues from tax assessments that will be generated next year, possibly other areas. He goes on to say, I discussed this with Sam approximately three weeks ago, he asked me if I would contact Kurt and explain the above possibilities, which I did. I assumed Kurt would contact the individuals connected with the above city properties. For my last conversation, approximately a week ago, it appears that Kurt has not contacted these individuals, and he has not contacted me since that time. It's my opinion that if you delay this bonding and look at other avenues, it would be a great advantage to the City of Sheldon in many ways. Even though we may have to borrow money for the fire truck, we can borrow it on a local level from our local banks, and it would be beneficial to Sheldon. We could pay it off in a much shorter timeframe, at the same time, we would be using our local banks, who are so generous in donating money to all entities when needed.
We also would not have to pay...
We also would not have to pay any bonding costs.
If you have any question on the above properties, or anything else?
If you have any question on the above properties, or anything else, please contact me.
So, that is one of the written comments.
So, that is one of the written comments, were there any other written comments that we have received?
Are there any public comments from those...
Are there any public comments from those either here or listening in by Zoom?
Seeing none, hearing none, I would...
Seeing none, hearing none, I would accept the motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Eggers.
Aye.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Public hearing is closed.
Public hearing is closed.
You have in your packets a resolution.
Uh, you have in your packets a resolution.
Moving this forward.
Moving this forward.
What is your desire at this time? Scott, you still with us?
Scott, you still with us?
I am.
Okay, hopefully we can hear you a little bit better this time.
Okay, hopefully we can hear you a little bit better this time, so regarding, regarding the, one of the things that we've talked, you and I have talked about, but, uh, I think it's important that we spend a moment talking about it here, is that because of the timing of how this is moved forward with the two and a half million dollars being the next item, and the million dollars for this item, even though it's two separate funding sources and two separate amortization schedules, you were able to couple this together for us to help save some funds, and streamline the process. Would you mind addressing that very briefly for us?
Yeah, sure, you have to do, thanks, Tim. So, you know, anytime you go through a bonding process, there's a variety of, some of those you as council members are aware of, and then there's others that's more directly, and, um, obviously we're, pardon all that, um, part of the process relates to...
Scott, hold on just a minute.
Scott, hold on just a minute, we're having, we're having a hard time hearing you. Scott, what was that?
Did you hear what Todd just said now, far as being on speaker?
Did you hear what Todd just said now, far as being on speaker?
I did, I'm not on speaker phone, I'm on, uh, I'm actually traveling, I had a death family, I'm on my funeral, so it's probably more than I'm, I'm mobile than anything else. Um, um...
The last...
The last...
So, anyway.
The last three to four sentences you were saying were very garbled, and I didn't know where you were at that point, I hope you can remember better than I.
Sure, I'll just start over. Sure, um, I'll just start over, you know, there's a variety of costs that we incur when we go through the process, including utilizing bond council, the work we do, like a credit rating, rating A and B, um, you know, so, some of those costs are somewhat fixed, or issuing bond regardless of the size of your bond is issued, the fact that you're going through a borrowing two and a half billion dollars by adding another million, some of those costs effectively don't change at all, so, you know, when we talk about bonding costs, adding the million dollars to the fire truck is extremely economically efficient, because you're already going to, because you're already going to, the costs are going to be incurred regardless. Credit rating, for example, is the great example, it's about two thousand dollars, and whether that cost, not gonna change, whether borrowing two and a half or three and a half million dollars.
Okay. Okay.
Interest rates is another topic, you know, we certainly would expect to be able to, well, great example, earlier this week, I, um, we locked in rates for it, a water district just south of Des Moines that has a exact same credit rating as the city of Sheldon, so I would expect interest rates to be very similar. Uh, they borrowed money for fifteen years at one and a half percent on a fixed rate base. So, just to give you some context where rates are at in bond market, I would guess probably, um, probably, very unlikely you would create that kind of borrowing rate, uh, on a fixed rate basis from a bank, from a bank, from a direct purchase. I say that, but, um, the truth is, also, we probably will sell some of these bonds back to your local bank, and they will get to pay, albeit a bit indirectly through us, but by issuing the debt as bond, they'll get, you know, kind of, a little bit of, that's the both worlds, the expense, you experience low interest rates afforded by the bond market, while still facilitating the default under your local bank, the extent they want to be, um, in, in buying the debt, so, kind of, I guess that, hopefully that's the both worlds, kind of, situation.
Okay.
Okay.
Did anyone else have questions for Scott?
Did anyone else have questions for Scott, or Sam?
Did I hear that, interest rates, one and a half?
Did I hear that, interest rates, one and a half? Yes, okay.
No more questions?
No more questions?
All right.
All right.
Thanks again, Scott.
Thanks again, Scott, for your, uh, help there. So...
Again, we have a resolution here.
Again, we have a resolution here.
What is your wishes as far as that?
What is your wishes as far as that, to approve or not approve?
So, the official, uh...
Resolution.
Resolution is the bonding of, but not to exceed one million dollars in capital, general obligation, capital loan notes, is that correct?
For emergency services purposes, and then the actual purchase, uh, is item E.
Got it.
All right, I will make that motion to approve.
All right, I will make that motion to approve the bonding.
Second.
Further discussion?
Further discussion?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Snyder.
Aye.
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 Now, we have the second half of that moving on to item C.
The two and a half billion dollar general obligation notes.
So, we need to open a public hearing on that one?
So, we need to open a public hearing on that one.
Are there any public comments from anyone here?
Are there any public comments from anyone here?
To address at the council this time?
Would like to address at the council this time?
Anyone listening in by Zoom that would like to address the council?
Anyone listening in by Zoom that would like to address the council regarding the two and a half million dollar notes.
I should have asked this before, were there any written comments?
I should have asked this before, were there any written comments or objections to that? No, sir, okay.
Motion to close public hearing.
Then I will take a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Support.
All right.
All right.
Second verse, we have a resolution.
Second verse, we have a resolution approving this as well.
Pardon me?
Pardon me?
Closing of the public session.
Okay, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Good luck out, Fred.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
All right, now we are officially closed.
All right, now we are officially closed.
Now we have the resolution.
Now we have the resolution for the two and a half million.
Need a motion to prove that.
Need a motion to prove that.
Make that motion to approve the resolution.
Support.
Further discussion?
Make either one of those, further discussion?
Roll call, please.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
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 Then we have item D, the resolution approving...
All right, then we have item D, the resolution approving the preliminary official statement.
I'll take a motion to approve that.
I'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Support.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Support.
Any discussion?
Explain to me the, uh, subject to change.
Subject, what does that mean?
The dollar amount, subject, what does that mean?
That's a legal ease from our bond council?
That's a legal ease from our bond council.
I know, Scott, I know you're not our bond council, but can you help me with that?
I know, Scott, I know you're not our bond council, but can you help me with, with that one? Did you hear the question?
Had dollar amount subject to change in the title?
They had dollar amount subject to change in the title?
Yep, you bet, so... The nature of that relates to... The nature of that relates to, it ties back to your public hearing, as you know, your public hearing is stated as a not exceed amount, meaning you could borrow less than two and a half million, they have one million dollars of public hearings on, not need that number, so, we need that as being preliminary in terms of change, in case you were to change your mind and say... You'd like to borrow a little bit less. You'd like to borrow a little bit less, now as you move forward, this process towards the point where we lock in the financing, leaving, you need the flexibility, you change your mind, should you, decide you need to do so in the future, this projects to get all locked in, projects to get all locked in your upcoming council meeting on August fourth, but between now and then, again, should you have any change that amount, or you're able to do so.
Okay, did I answer your question?
Yes, okay, did I answer your question?
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Scott. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion, we have a second?
Ready to vote?
Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Eggers.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
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 Snyder.
Aye.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
All right.
All right. And then the final...
The final part, you know, piece of this puzzle today, uh, we need to approve a resolution authorizing purchase of the fire truck, ladder truck.
Who to accept, who to accept, propose the motion?
Okay. Support for that? Support for that?
If I might?
If I might?
If there's support first, and then I have a question?
Support, okay.
Uh, Eric, are you on from Felt Fire?
The final part, you know, piece of this puzzle today.
Uh, we need to...
Uh, we need to approve resolution authorizing purchase of the fire truck, ladder truck.
Who to accept, who to accept, who to accept the motion?
Support for that?
Support for that? If I might? Yes. If I support it first, and then I have a question? A support. Okay.
Uh, Eric, are you on from Feld Fire? Eric, can you hear me now?
Eric, can you hear me now?
I can hear him. I can hear him.
Okay, so Eric, link, this is Sam, the city manager. So, link to the agenda. We have the one hundred and sixty-two pages of specifications, and it's linked to your, your server. So, it doesn't make our packet too thick. But one of the things that came up, uh, this week was the remote, uh, the remote control for the new, for the new truck, and that's not included in the specs, but it is your intent to include them in the specs for the price that you have quoted us, correct?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was in the...
Correct. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was in the, uh, that was in the minutes.
And then the delivery date is...
And then the delivery date is anticipated to be, um, no later than June thirty of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Further discussion?
Further discussion?
I've received phone calls today.
The insurance check that we received went to the above million dollar price. Price. The truck was more than a million dollars, right? The truck was one million and sixty-six thousand dollars. And the hundred and eighty thousand dollar, um, the hundred and eighty thousand dollar down payment is coming from insurance proceeds, which was just slightly over a hundred and eighty thousand. I believe it was a hundred and eighty-two thousand that we received from the insurance check.
That's where I explained it, but I wanted to be sure.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So, the balance due then would be around eight hundred and eighty-six thousand. Any more questions?
Any more questions?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye. Aye.
All right.
All right.
Forward. Got all that wrapped up?
Forward.
All right.
Got all that wrapped up? All right. Anything from you further?
Todd, anything from you?
All right. Todd, anything from you?
Just wondering with four inches of rain over the last couple of weeks.
Just wondering with four inches of rain over the last couple of weeks, has that done anything in terms of our water watch?
Status unchanged.
With the said rain, has that changed?
With the, with the said rain, has that changed the completion dates for our street projects?
All, all street projects are still moving along nicely. Sam's got, uh, a lot of information in his report. I did, so, yeah, things are going well there. There's still a lot of roadwork, uh, yet to be done this year, so, uh, keep looking out for barricades.
All right. Very good. Kurt's head to leave for another meeting, which is going to happen here shortly. Scott, anything you'd like to share at this time? Angie's not here. Do you have anything? Mike is going, counsel to my left. Anything from you?
Tom, anything from you?
Tom, anything from you? Any comments?
Oh, thank you.
No, thank you.
Wayne?
No, thank you.
And I have none, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Snyder.
Aye.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all.